Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Education Regular Business Meeting. Can I get a motion to open the meeting? Christine, second from Teresa. All in favor? Okay. Oh, yeah. And Mr. Palacios is not able to make the meeting this evening. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss specific legal, collective bargaining, personnel, and other matters in accordance with the Open Meetings Law. Can I have a motion to open exec? For Teresa, second from Kelly, all in favor? So moved. We will be back at seven thirty. Thank you. Welcome back. I need a motion to close exec and open the public meeting. Tom and a second. Teresa, all in favor? Thank you. As a reminder, the... Oops, do the pledge first.
Yes.
Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Palacios cannot make the meeting this evening. And as a reminder, there are exits on the side and the back for the people in the auditorium.
And it's no smoking.
What? Oh, and we're a no-smoking campus. Okay. We have a few approvals and FYIs this evening. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve minutes from the meeting of the Huntington School Board dated February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Can I have a motion? Christine, a second from Teresa. Any comments? All in favor? That is everyone. We have a few FYIs: Budget appropriation reports, general school lunch and special aid funds, dated February twenty-ninth, budget transfers, and revenue status report. Does anybody have any questions? No? Okay. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve the attached warrants which were certified for payment on February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Can I have a motion? Kelly, a second from Teresa. All in favor? That is everyone. Okay, moving on to board member comments. Teresa?
I just wanted to acknowledge the amazing amount of music that we've had going on in our district recently, and the opportunity to attend the Honors Ensembles, the Symphonic Pops, as well as the Skamia Festival this past weekend. And just have to give a couple of thank yous. I know that that was probably a monumental undertaking, and I know Sandy and Janet and Tom have been working tirelessly, so thank you to them. And our security staff, I cannot believe, were here from the beginning of the day all the way to the nighttime, so it was special thanks to them. And the custodial staff, the high school looked great. And I think, I was just so impressed with our kids, how they conducted themselves, especially in the Skamia Festival, helping other kids find their way. It was really special, and I enjoyed it.
Anyone else?
You want to... Do you have something else?
Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to address something that came up at the meeting last time. And I'm, I think it was a miscommunication, or I'm not sure, but when we were going over the capital proposals and we were talking about the auditorium and the price came up and there was some discussion very quickly about the large size of the budget for that. And I just wanted to give my own personal perspective on it. This is something that I've been advocating for, for a very long time. And as this is going to be my last year on the board, I'm very excited that hopefully it will happen before I leave. And you know, last year when I was president and we were discussing some of the athletic upgrades, and I asked a lot of questions, and I was never against it, but I was sort of made to feel like people thought I was against it, and I just wanted to say that in this time, this is just as important as that and should be given the same critique and the same support that the other projects were given. So I just want to give my wholehearted support for all of the details of the project. I think it's something that needs to be done at one, like, as one project, not to trickle in, because as we've found over the years that I've been on the board, putting off projects only ends up costing us more money in the end. A few years ago, we did seven million dollars' worth of projects, and it ended up saving us a lot of money in the end when we look back on how much those projects would have cost us to do later. So I just wanted to voice in isolation my wholehearted support for the upgrades to the auditorium and the other projects that were proposed. And I just think it's been a long time coming, and it really affects the so many kids, a great number of students, a great part of our community as a whole outside of school. And it's academic, it's extracurricular, it's not only about the arts, but it's about instruction. When we took our tour, we heard from Mr. Cusack about how classes would be able to utilize that room more efficiently and more effectively. And I just think there's so many reasons to support the project, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Well, you said you want to talk about it in isolation, so I'll hold off.
No, I meant, I meant not during...
No, because I wasn't here, so I didn't get a chance to participate last time.
Oh, no, I meant in isolation in the way that like, I didn't want to speak about it during capital discussion.
By the way, I'm actually in favor of it without going into detail. But again, every capital expenditure, you need to justify the amount of money, because it is a lot, but it is a marquee place, premier. We've got one of the finest auditoriums in Suffolk County. And so I I won't go into it there, but yeah. I actually had the opportunity, along with our esteemed Superintendent, to attend the Niskus Conference up in Albany. Niskus is the New York State Council of School Superintendents. They have two meetings a year. One of the things, I'll let Superintendent discuss, you know, what his impressions are, but I always stay for the final morning, which is the Commissioner Education in New York gets to speak. I do it more for entertainment purposes than anything else. This year, the hot topic, if you will, was all electric buses, right? And the state has provided guidance for everyone to move to electric buses, and everyone's like, uh, what? Now, we are a little bit different, though, from the rest of the state when you hear this conversation, because the majority, I think by count of school districts, they all run their own bus fleets. And so when they look at going electric, they're all looking at having to buy these buses themselves. Whereas, you know, what we do is, you know, we contract out to a transportation company to do it. So, you know, we don't own them, and that expense isn't directly ours. But anyways, the point of my story is the first question. And these questions that the Commissioner has asked are all softballs. They're prepped beforehand, right? First question was, well, tell us about the guidance for electric buses and how school districts... Long and short of it is, she spoke for ten minutes on the topic in response to the first question. I was listening and watching my watch. And then the ten minutes, her response never included the word "electric" for "bus." Right? Ten minutes. So that's the kind of fun we have when we talk about our Commissioner and the really strong direct guidance we get as school districts. So just wanted you all to know, I'm trying to watch out for us.
I felt the same way last year. I think it was the end of the year when she spoke at the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Conference. It was, it wasn't buses, it was something else, but it was ten minutes of talking and we all looked around at each other, but she didn't answer the question.
Yeah, let's, is she answering the question that was asked?
Yeah.
Really? So that was it. That was my fun at the conference. I'm sure Christian has a lot more concrete things that he can add up.
Thank you. I just had a few things before I turn it over to Mr. Bowen. I had the pleasure last week, it was probably the highlight of the week, to go to Flower Hill and read to preschoolers. So thank you for having me, Flower Hill, and Flower Hill PTA inviting me through the PARC program. It was, you know, one of, it was a validation of why I sit up here and why I volunteer to get into the classroom and see those kids. It was really a lot of fun. And my children went to Flower Hill, so it was nice to be in that building, and I saw some faces that I hadn't seen in a long time, so I really appreciated that. I did attend the Skamia Concert Saturday evening. And to reiterate what Teresa said, shout out to the entire staff at the high school for pulling that off, our music teachers and staff, our security staff, our custodial staff, and the concert was really wonderful. And it's nice that we were hosting it and as hosting anything across the across our schools, whether it be an athletic event, county athletic event, or a music event, or whatever, a community event, I'm very proud of when we do that. And lastly, our spring athletic season starts today, and I'd like to give a shout out and wish our spring athletes a very good season ahead. Mr. Bowen?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll start with Niskus. There were definitely some quality lectures and presentations that I saw. One of them, though, there was quite a bit of sight-swiping and not addressing, which was the foundational aid. As I've shared before, Huntington's in a solid spot with that, but there are districts, about half the districts in the state are seeing a reduction, and that's obviously of concern. I do see a lot of that playing out in the next month, and by April first, hopefully, we'll get a little clear direction on where they're going with that. There were some also updates on the Blue Ribbon Commission, not a whole lot there, other than what was shared, I believe publicly by myself in the fall. There was a good presentation on equity in education. I've also attended a strategic plan workshop, and that's something I'd like to discuss with the board in the coming months as we move forward. And they were really great speakers. They were called Ignite Sessions. And Niskus was centered around excellence for all students, and I think that's really important as we move into, obviously, funding and budget for this year. But I also think it's a great segue for anyone that read the article about ELA and Algebra Regents that was a couple of weeks old. One of the things I definitely want to highlight is that Huntington truly is Algebra Frawl at the eighth grade level. So what you're not seeing in that data is what the districts are doing behind the scenes. We also know that each district on Long Island are not operating the same way and do not have the same community. So I do stand by what our results are. We are definitely looking to improve them. The other point I'd like to make in that article is that also reflects testing from August and January, which if you do a cycle of testing, you know that those are typically the students that have to retake the exam. So any student that does not pass in June likely is going to count as a negative data point in us for three of those data sets. And that's not represented in that chart, but I did want to point that out. When I returned, our students headed up to Frost Valley on Tuesday. Thankfully, safe travels up and down. They had a great time. I do want to thank, obviously, Mr. Myers, but all the staff that assisted on the way up and down. Students had a great time up there. The weather did get better as the week progressed, thankfully. So that's always a great opportunity. I know the parents were eager to see some pictures, to see what their kids were up to, and hopefully being able to find them. There was that squirrel apparatus, which looked entertaining. So they definitely look to enjoy themselves. I will also echo Teresa's, Michelle's sentiments about Skamia. Great event. We have a great facility. I think we can do a little bit better with that facility, with our lighting and sound. And while I know everyone appreciates the aesthetics and the structure of the auditorium, I think this proposal that we're going to move forward is something that will really bring it to the next level. Some other reminders, next Monday is National History Day in this auditorium. We also have Finley's Musical Into the Woods, High School Chicago. And also want to wish our students best of luck, obviously, in those performances, but also NISMIA, as that begins as well. And to Michelle's point, the weather is starting to look good, so I wish our student athletes luck as well in heading into the spring season.
Christian, just before, sorry, Michelle. One conversation, just to piggyback on what you had said, that I did have, that I always have when I go to the winter, well, this one, the budget advocacy meeting, is I speak with Bob Lowry, who is Niskus's legislative advocate. Okay, Bob used to be a lobbyist in Albany. He's been there his whole life. And he's very well-plugged into what's going on within the legislative process. And I always respect his opinion on where things are going to go. My direct question was, you know, there's some school districts that are really getting hammered, and they're losing a lot of money on the foundation aid, and there are some that are doing okay. Is there a chance that they're going to take from some that are getting to give to those that are not? And he said, no, he doesn't see that happening at all. He thinks the only thing that they're going to do is simply give more money to try to make whole those that were getting really shortened. So that was, you know, that was my greatest concern, is, you know, when they start playing money numbers, what are they going to do to those that looked like they were okay to make them not okay? So, and like I said, I really respect his opinion, because he's generally right, so.
And I've heard the same thing, and that would be really wrong to rob Peter, pay Paul. There are some discussions about changing the inflation rate, as well as those districts that have that initial low amount to possibly phase that in over time, which Dr. Harris and I have talked about, that probably should have been done for the past three years, rather than just in one single year. But yeah, we'll see how all this plays out.
Okay, move on, moving on to our public commentary. The public commentary are for residents of the Huntington School District or staff. You have three minutes to speak. The first thirty minutes would be for items for discussion and action, and after that would move forward. Would anybody like to speak? All six people in the audience. Okay. Then moving on to the budget presentation.
We are ready? All right. So tonight, we will be going over the nine thousand series analysis, as well as following back up with more capital discussion. So these items listed here are all of the areas that fall under the nine thousand series, which is primarily made up of benefits, debt service, and transfers. I'm not going to read them all to you. You've probably seen these each year. What this does is it takes all of those different areas that you just saw listed and provides a dollar amount to them. You will see the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three actual expense. You will see the twenty-three, twenty-four adopted budget. And then you will see two drafts, because we've now had, this is being our second budget meeting, that have included numbers. As adjustments have occurred, these will change. Last budget presentation, I did show a slide that summarized a lot of major expense areas. You will see that again in the next two presentations forthcoming, but I am focusing here on the nine thousand series. So at the top, you see ERS and TRS, which we have no control over those rates and how much we pay. Just for a note here, and I also have descriptions there, so people can follow along as well. ERS went from thirteen point one percent as an average to fifteen point two percent. That's also why we had that point one percent allowance in our tax cap calculation, because it was more than two percent of an increase from one year to the next. TRS, you will see here, has went from point, it has a point two-six percent increase, so it went from nine point seven-six percent, and they are telling us to estimate ten point zero-two percent. So there is an increase there, as well as the fact that salaries have went up from one year to the next. These numbers I do want to express as benefit areas when we get to the next presentation, which will be staffing. They will shuffle again, right? As you have retirements, salary goes down, then you're looking at ERS, TRS, Social Security, so there will be a shuffle of the deck again with those numbers, but I will update that as as we go through. Social Security is based on salary projections, so you do see the percentage increase there. Workers' compensation, we are not projecting an increase there, so that's holding steady. Life insurance, like any other insurance, goes up, so we see a slight increase there. Based on the information with unemployment and disability, we felt that these were steady. I believe, I did listen to the presentation from last year. Last year, there was efforts put in place to bring those down to be more aligned with actuals. Given that, I'm seeing that the expenses are not drastically increasing and seem pretty stable there, I felt comfortable keeping those at those limits. Health insurance, as mentioned, the last meeting, has a hefty increase. This increase you see here is slightly reduced, and I'll go through that on, I believe it is, the next slide, on the numbers and how they've changed since the first presentation. We did look at myself, as well as Jorge, who was in my office, he helps me a lot with the background numbers. We did look at health insurance for actual, because it's not on school year cycle. It's on January through December cycle, so we do know what to anticipate for at least half the year. Taking that into consideration with where our current two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four spend is, we tried to remove as much additional as we could to bring this more in alignment and also be cognizant of what our tax increases are looking like and what we need to balance the budget. So though we've done that, it's still a large increase. The next items you hear, dental, we have held steady. I am still reviewing that as we have a new dental insurance provider. So we're costing that out to make sure that that amount of money is necessary. We have not made an adjustment as of yet. And then the area of other benefits include EAP. It has retirement payouts. Looking that information over, we kept that steady. We didn't see the need to increase for the upcoming budget year. The next line item you have here is debt service, and you will see an increase here. Debt service, that is not the money that we are paying on the remaining debt. That is actually tan interest. So we do a short-term borrowing of sixteen million, and interest rates are still high. And through review, I did want to make a note of this, because you'll see in the twenty-three, twenty-four, it was three hundred and seventy thousand. But if you look at two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, it was five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, right? So that means that due to that expense being higher and that budget area being lower, we took funds from a different area that we weren't expending, and we put it there. Just reviewing this for where we stand for the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four year, our bill is closer to the four hundred and eighty thousand area. So I am including a little bit of possibility of flux, but if it does nothing else, this will fully support the cost of tan interest. Any questions with those items this far? Okay. The next segment, in the past, I believe you've seen this as inter-fund transfers and a large chunk of money. I just broke it out a little bit, so it's very clear of how much is in each transfer line or going into each fund if necessary. So you have school lunch fund. There is forty thousand there this year. I did not remove that for next year. I do not believe it will be expensed in either year. That's my belief, that it will not be expensed due to CEP. My concern with removing it outright is in two years or three years, if you do not qualify, those funds may be necessary, and you've now appropriated that someplace else. So it's here as a placeholder, and if it's not spent, it falls back down to fund balance. It's not a loss at all. The next area is special aid fund. This really ties into special education for summer school, as well as UPK. So based on the funding calculation for the pre-K students, the state only gives you so much of an allocation per pupil. The allocation per pupil cannot be adjusted on our end, even though you might have a large pot of money. They look at the number of students. They give you a rate per child. That is all you are allowed to pay to providers. The cost of educating pre-K students is more than the allocation provided. So we do have, I believe it is about eighty thousand dollars slotted to do a transfer to special aid to offset the cost and allow us to have our programs, which I know are scope, and I believe there is another one. YMCA, sorry. So that, that funds are there, as well as what would go to cover special education that happens in the summer. The state covers a percentage, and the rest of the money comes from the school district, so that transfer covers that cost as well. The next line is the debt service fund. That is the actual debt service payment. Things to note here is the balance is four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars, and our last payment will be in the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year. And then we have no debt payments outside of tan, which is the short-term borrowing interest. And then you have the capital fund. The two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, in the adopted budget that we are currently running, there is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars designated, and I believe this is for the, my brain is drawing a beautiful blank. Yes, thank you. I want to say something solar, but I knew it wasn't solar. This is for the greenhouse, so that, those funds are designated there, and we will talk about the two hundred and fifty thousand that we've incorporated for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five year as we get further into the presentation. So these are some changes that have occurred since the February twenty-sixth meeting. As you've already seen, with ERS, Social Security and health insurance and the debt service, on the past slide, we did make some adjustments there based on what we are actually seeing happen through review of bills and prior year trends. Also, on the revenue side, is two adjustments. One is in the area of BOSI's aid, and that is just reviewing the expense-driven aid category. There's a lot of background detail that go into that. So based on the review, we did a slight increase there. And then the interest and earnings. Based on a multi-year review, this, this line can be increased by a hundred thousand. I'm discussing back and forth with the auditors currently on the interest category, because we do earn a lot of interest, but a lot of that has to go directly into our reserves. So we're trying to find the line of what do we recognize on the revenue side, because it can offset the cost in a budget, versus what is the interest that is going directly into reserves and should not be recognized upfront, because it can inflate how much revenue you're bringing in, which makes you think you can spend more and you can't. Any questions on this one? Another thing to note, as it's been mentioned tonight, is about foundation aid. So both of the one-house budget proposals should be able to be in hand, we're hoping by the end of this week. Once that information is available, we'll definitely share that out. Based on the February, so there are multiple aid polls that happen. The February review did occur. I am reviewing that. I have not made adjustments to the revenue based on that information. It does have our aid as a higher number, but I do want to make sure that I'm taking into account is half of the higher number because of CPI? Or is the higher number taking into consideration the governor's playing with CPI? And I can include it all, so I'm working through all the pieces that are there, and I will have an update at the next meeting. Not much has changed here. This is just showing you the budget as of certain dates, so you'll see a slight reduction in the budget at the very top. You will see the budget at levy limit, and what that... at the very top. Uh, you will see the budget at levy limit, and what that means, uh, the tax levy at the max allowable. The revenue changes that occurred, and nothing has changed in reference to assess value, because we do not find that information out until later. So given that I am new and trying to learn as much as possible about, um, current trends as well as past trends, I worked through, uh, with, uh, Mr. Bowen a bit to kind of understand what has happened in the past in reference to the, uh, tax cap calculation. And I think it's important to go through this, um, not to say that anything was done incorrectly, but just to provide a picture of what we want to do and things we should be doing in the future when it comes to reviewing this. So last meeting, uh, we showed, I think it was the first or the second slide, was a chart that showed all of the budget-to-budget increases for the last twelve to thirteen years. Um, it also showed the levy increases and the levy allowance. Levy increase means this is what we actually levied. Levy allowance is what the state said you could levy per the tax cap calculation. Um, and it really was just to provide a deep dive. So what this does is it looks at the last four years of what has occurred piece by piece and how it impacts the school district financially. So I also want to note the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five levy amount has not been decided. I just had to pick a starting point uh, to include in this presentation. Um, so things to note, so for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year, there was no loss in carryover. Uh, the district levied one point seven seven percent of what was a two point one nine allowable tax levy. That amount then gets carried over. So what that means is that difference between one point seven seven and two point one nine percent can get carried into the next year's calculation. It's an allowance. The calculation itself is either you can carry the difference of what you could have levied versus what you did, or you can carry one point five percent of the allowable, um, the prior year's allowable. So as you're doing the math, that's where I get some of these numbers as what was levy loss or what was loss carryover, because you can't breach that anymore. So I'm gonna go through this slowly. So in the twenty-one, twenty-two scale, school year, we levied point three three percent of the allowable one point eight five. We were allowed to carry over one point six million, and we did. In the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, we levied zero of the allowable set, three point seven seven percent. The total carryover would have been four point one, and the allowable carryover was one point seven. So that's why there's a loss of the two point four million dollars. Then the next school year, so that would be the one we're in right now, we levied point eight eight percent of the allowable four point zero two percent. The total carryover was three point four million, and the allowable per the calculation was one point seven. So when you look at this chart under current levy limit, that is us. Does that make sense? That, that is us, Huntington. So in the process of doing the tax cap calculation and what was allowed to be levied versus what was levied, there was a little bit over four million dollars that was left on the table, and we will never get access to that again. So then you see the max, which I'm not saying go to the max, I'm just showing, um, what this looks like. So when you're looking at the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year, at three percent, it's a hundred and seventeen million. At the max level, so all the way on the right in the twenty-four, twenty-five, it's a hundred and twenty-two million. So it's just showing you the differences there. And then in the middle is the alternative levy. It's not going to the max, it's trying to find some sweet spot in the middle that works. Um, really, the, where these percentages came from, so you'll see one percent, two percent, two point two, two point four, are strictly based around where do we hit the point of levying what is needed and necessary without losing revenue in the future. Those are where they come from. I didn't do any other budget analysis. I didn't jack up expenses. It's just to show the picture of finding that sweet spot allows taxpayers to have some level of expectation of what could occur as well as stability and slow growth. Right? Because now we're looking at, we've left so much on the table that we are able to levy three point nine three. But that's a hefty increase to, to anybody, any community, but especially on the island. So really, this is just for the purposes of showing there is an option of not losing carryover, but still being what is acceptable as a tax levy. Um, it's also to explain the carryover allowances and I don't, I, it's like you leave money on the table, which I'm okay with leaving money on the table, but I'd, I'd rather leave money that I can come back and grab instead of something that we can never access. And then we're also in the year that the state is providing very little to us, and my assumption is that's going to continue to happen. Hopefully, it doesn't go the opposite way, but I don't think the state is going to get back into providing the millions of dollars. So a lot of this is going to be based on where your levy sits and what the community supports. Um, and then the last thing to mention, there is the ability to do the tax cap calculation and project it out. I didn't want to give people too much to chew in one night. Um, but in the future, not for these budget presentations for this year, but in future ones, you will see that. It, we are, we are going to project out the tax levy limit, uh, a couple of years to see what it means, what are our options? Um, where are we shortfalling, so we can plan accordingly, as well as just financially projecting out as well.
Yeah, and if I could just interject, so thi- this task that I put Ruby on, uh, was us kind of talking about historical levy, uh, if you recall, to her point, the chart of, of levies and where we were with limits and, and what the district moved forward with. Uh, these are the, we'll say, the COVID years of, of aid, so there was a lot of money being thrown at districts like Huntington. Um, but for me, I'm a slow and steady wins-the-race kind of person, so I did ask her, what are the values that if we were to just hit that sweet spot of, of levy limits without hitting the max? What would those be? Where would we end up? Uh, and if you look really at that middle column, and I'm not saying that, you know, that's where, uh, we should go or, or continue down that, and that's always our answer. But it, just in looking then, in that middle row, uh, you'll see that there's a difference of, you know, approximately four million dollars, uh, that was left on the table. Uh, we were not in the minority, I think, pretty much every district on Long Island during that twenty-two, twenty-three did go a zero percent. Uh, it's bookmarking that with the thirty-three and eighty-eight. Uh, that, that obviously, uh, is, is money that was lost as a district, so. That's just the rationale.
Right. I get, I get that. I guess I, I'm not sure about the wording of leaving it on the table, because it would have been tax, it would have been taxpayer money. It's not money that somebody was gonna, right, it's not free money that was left on the table. But, um, I, I'm just, I thank you so much. I totally got the whole first part, but I'm a little confused. Am I going across? So for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five, am I going across those percentages? Because as I go across, the percentages go down, and then dollar numbers go up for eleven, so I'm a little confused.
Okay, I'm glad you brought that up. So under the, um, we'll start, let's look at max, right? So in the max limit, when you go to twenty-four, twenty-five, it shows two point three nine percent. That is the maximum percentage of the levy allowed, because it's already at the max calculation. So a lot of what is happening, um, I believe last year was four point zero two, uh, as an allowable levy limit that you could have went up to. This year, it's three point nine three percent as an allowable levy limit that you could have went up to. That is because there is such a large amount of carryover. So even though there was four million dollars that was never, um, collected, there is still one point seven five seven of a carryover in the current year's number. So that is removed if you're at max limits every year, because there's no carryover to exist. The carryover only happens when you say, hey, I could levy this, all this money, I'm not going to. I'm going to levy less than the calculation per the Office of State Comptroller allows for a carryover. The carryover is the lesser of what was left per the calculation or one point five percent of the prior year's levy prior to exclusions. So when you put in, when you put in what you levied for the current year, and I don't calculate this. I did have to calculate it for this purpose, but per the actual Office of State Comptroller, you put in what you levied, they do the math, and they say to you, this is the allowable carryover. A lot of it is, you populate a front number, and they're calculating in the background to get you to what your levy limit is.
So, uh, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. Is that two point three nine percent is the carryover? Represents the carryover?
That is what you could levy if you had went to the max limit every single year.
Okay. So the one point seven number would have been the carryover? And then you add one point seven to the two point three nine, and then you get to what our current levy limit is this year?
Which column are you in?
I'm in max levy limit.
Okay.
Yeah, so tho- those are three distinct columns and tables, we'll say.
Right.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
There are three, correct.
Current levy is, is one column or group of columns you want to look at.
Yep.
And then max would be, to Ruby's point, if you, if we maxed out the levy every single year, beginning with the twenty-twenty-one budget, uh, those are the, the max amounts and the values that come with it. Um, the middle one is really just an example of somewhere in between. Uh, and that somewhere in between is using the max allowable limit, uh, without losing funds, without losing carryover funds, I should say.
Can we just go back to the max levy limit? So if we're just looking at that, and then we backtrack to last year. So last year, if we did not, we did not carry anything over, correct? Well, no.
Every year you have carried over.
Because we didn't take the full amount.
Right, so any year that, um, if you look, if we go back to the last presentation, that first slide, that was a chart. And on the chart, it's, it showed what we levied as a percentage, what was allowable to be levied as a percentage. If those two numbers did not match, then there was a carryover.
Uh, okay, so let me rephrase that question. So our number that we looked at last week or two weeks ago was the three point nine something, so that so, right, so that is including the carryover, because
The three point nine includes one million, I think it's one million, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand and some change of carryover from the prior year.
So subtracting that would bring us to the two point three nine from the three point nine three, right? Is that what you just said?
It would, it would bring you close. It's not going to be exactly, because you're trying to compare two different things. The two point three nine is you're going max every single year. So because like, even, even if you look just at last year, there was a component of carryover. So taking that out for one year is not going to get you perfectly to that number.
Yeah, okay, okay. But, yeah, okay. I think I understand.
I think the next slide actually helps show with the, with the different percentages of, you know, versus the, what the levy limit looks like.
This is just to show a snapshot, but after every decision you make, it literally shuffles the deck of numbers. So this slide, we did see last meeting, um, as expressed, every point one percent increase in the tax levy percentage is an additional one hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars in revenue. This also shows different levy scenarios, uh, going from two point four percent all the way to the maximum of three point nine three percent. Any questions, comments? Okay. So now we're gonna go into the direction of capital. So Prop one will be just the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five budget, and Proposition two is what we're going to discuss, uh, in a couple of moments in reference to capital reserve appropriations. And things to remember, uh, there's no additional impact on the tax levy or tax rate. And if not approved, um, monies remain in the capital reserve and cannot be used for any other purpose. And if these costs, uh, actually come in lower, the funds go back into the capital reserve. We do not have the right to use it for any other purpose. So this, a lot of these things, uh, you have seen before outside of the transfer to capital item. So we have, uh, the auditorium at the high school. We also have listed here the visitor bathrooms at the high school. We have the third of what will be four phases of the roof replacement at Jack Abrams Stem, and we have the cafeteria air conditioning. We are still reviewing some of the items that are included for the auditorium. They're low-hanging fruit. Um, we do believe that our Buildings and Grounds Department can do some of them. I'm just confirming that. Hate to say people can do things and then it's not included. Um, and we are also looking into the visitor bathrooms. Um, Buildings and Grounds did a wonderful job in different buildings in regard to bathrooms, so we are seeing if that is possible, as well as looking at plumbing needs there. If you've been in those bathrooms, they are a little different. Uh, so we are trying to inves- investigate that a little bit more to see if that can come down. That final answer will be known by the, uh, March twenty-fifth board meeting. Um, the new item here that you're seeing is in reference to, we listed transfer to capital. We were not positive what we were doing in that area, especially because we only had two hundred and fifty thousand earmarked there. Through review of the five-year plan, um, something that popped out to myself, as well as, uh, Mr. Bowen and Rick Rouse, who is our Buildings and Grounds, uh, Director, Director of Facilities, was the cross corridor smoke doors. Um, this is listed in every single one of our elementary buildings as something that needs to occur. And really, if you're, if you've been, most of you, if not all of you, have been in these buildings more than once, um, there are not cutoff doors. So if you're thinking about one floor and something occurring, whether it's safety, security, fire, there is no automatic closing corridors to block something off. So if something were to occur, it's just free rein around the building. The goal of this transfer to capital is to put, um, two sets of corridors in each one of the elementary buildings. Um, given it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we have earmarked Southdown in Washington, and then the goal would be next year to, uh, incorporate the other two elementary buildings. So we're crossing things off the five-year plan, as well as making sure safety and security is at the top of the list of things we're also focusing on. And then you'll just see the asterisks here, so one asterisk means items from the facility estimated five-year plan. And then two is the items not able to be covered through the ARP grant funds, so I just designated that. So, uh, I think visuals always help with anything, uh, as you're talking about it. The auditorium is kind of hard, because a lot of it is nuts and bolts, right? Um, the lights will be different, the sound will be different, so it'll look different, and it'll sound different, and it'll feel different. But when you're talking about such a, a large amount of money, you are looking to see what is going to be there. So going through the proposal that we received of quotes, um, shout out to Mike Zagan, who took time out of his day to actually break down some of these things that are very technical, uh, in, in the way they're described in the quote. Um, we were able to put together some visual components that I think will assist the board and community to understand what, uh, we see forthcoming. So this is from the area of the video projection and the scene setting and the movements.
I don't think it's gonna move all across the floor, but it was a nice visual. I didn't want to say that.
Yeah, that's a full immersive set, will be a partial immersive set. If you look really towards that back, uh, screen there, that's where they said it would take probably at least two, maybe three projectors to provide a backdrop setting for us. Uh, we're not going into the floor experience.
And then this just shows some other things that were included. So when you think about being in the auditorium and you are facing the stage, uh, on the left side and the right side, there seem to be panels. You would have these LED screens that would go there. Um, some of this stuff for sure is behind the scenes, especially when it comes to lighting and sound, but just digital mixing, uh, consoles, digital, uh, media presentation systems, things being able to actually talk to each other because the technology works, uh, perfectly in that. Well, the hope is that technology works perfectly. It works. So you need it to work. Um, but the students not having to run from one section to the other, uh, when things are going out and not working properly. So there, I think there's a lot of excitement for what this is going to provide full circle and opportunity for students to learn how to use some high-tech, uh, equipment as well. Another thing, uh, we're not going to play it here, but you do have the ability to click the rigging controls. So those two areas where it says click here, people can see and do on their own. Um, it just shows kind of the art behind rigging when it is, uh, auto verse, uh, the system we currently have set up, which is some, has some safety concerns there. Um, but it just provides that behind the scenes picture of how easily those can be done uh, and the benefits it provides to the staff and the students. And the other big thing, uh, for sure is the speakers. Uh, so there are twelve new auditorium speakers. I did look these up. So they better look like this because I literally Googled their exact specs. Um, so really just, you know, changing the quality of sound. Um, we are also talking about making sure the acoustics work properly. I've learned a lot in that area, even though I've still lost. But, uh, in reference to how sound bounces off, where it falls, dead spaces, all of those things, um, have been discussed and incorporated.
Anybody have any question?
Oh, yeah.
Can we stop, pause it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I had one thought. This is probably going way too in the future, but, uh, potentially, um, the video broadcasting classes, the video production classes. We have a stage crew. It's a club, but maybe down the road, like kind of tying that in. Cause those are all sort of technical type of, oh, okay.
I, I was going to say, Michelle, I, I smell, I smell some curriculum, new curriculum coming.
Ms. McCoy.
Yeah. Included in the proposal, I believe, are three video broadcasting cameras that would be arranged on the two sides of the auditorium as well as one up top that are the same as the ones that we're using in our classes. So students can record shows for us and be part of the auditorium experience and use what they're learning in class to support the district as we're recording an event. We can see it on the screens on either side. If you're not in the best seat in the house. And it really will be a full circle experience for our kids and in the coursework that they're taking. So it's extremely exciting.
Maybe even, um, events that we hold that family members that don't live nearby or friends that can see it. They, we could stream an honor society, uh, event or a pride award event. Like just that kind of encapsures more of our school community.
Definitely, um, possible. And I think we do some streaming with, uh, athletics currently. So.
I'm just really excited about this. I mean, to echo Christine's sentiments, I feel like that auditorium has been piecemealed out for so long. Um, and I think, you know, I definitely heard Mr. Cusack loud and clear, the, the amount of academic impact this will have. Um, you know, our, our honor societies, but you know, we had to hold graduation there last year and only two of the speakers work. And it's, you know, just, I'm really excited. I think this is going to really sort of put us in, in a really good position to kind of start, I think where we've been looking, which is like multi-disciplinary kind of approach to, to our education. So I'm excited.
That was one of the things that I liked about this also in talking, um, during the tour with Mr. Cusack. And he was saying how when we have assemblies in the auditorium, I mean, that's something that touches every single child or every single student, not just those that are invested in, um, theater or arts or music or, or sports. All of the kids come here. They do orientations there. They do parent events there. So yeah, guidance nights. And as Bill had phrased it, I loved what you said. It's the mar- marquee, uh, you know, room that we have in our building, um, or, or space rather. So I think it definitely elevates, you know, our sense of pride too, and the kid's sense of pride when we do do events like Skimia, that sort of thing. It, it really does touch everybody in the district.
Yeah. It is that, but it's also defined as an auditorium from forty years ago. And you know, now you're, you know, basically you're all saying it, we actually need different facilities to support not just stage plays. You know, but it's a media arts center. And while we're doing this with our curriculum, we really need to do that to again, keep it as a marquee thing so that when we put out a production, people like, wow, we gotta go check that out. And it will open up all kinds of opportunities for our kids going forward as well. And, you know, teaching them real life skills that are transferable to real jobs going forward. So as, but we're really redefining when, you know, what an auditorium is and needs compared to what it was built as.
Anyone else?
Okay. All right. So, uh, this kind of just summarized the items that you already touched on, uh, in reference to different uses, whether it be course, courses slash programs or extracurricular. And then we just thought that we would put some pictures here, right? It shows students from all different grade levels, um, with all different backgrounds of, of arts um, that come together and they utilize these spaces. But it also brings in the pieces of, you know, guest speakers, assemblies. I did hear that graduation was held there. I just couldn't remember, uh, what year it was. Um, but your honors assemblies outside uses, right? So Skimia wasn't just a Huntington thing, right? You have people from other, uh, districts that come in communities to use this space. And I believe, uh, myself and Mr. Bowen were chatting, I think it was a couple of days ago in reference to, um, Huntington's auditorium being one of, I think, four? Is it four?
It's four or six. I think it's.
Biggest.
Yeah. The only ones that can, that can host that.
Right. So, you know, just knowing that you, you are one of the biggest and people really want to use the space. Um, it, it provides for those opportunities as well, right? Clearly it's for our students and our community, but just when people come here, it's us being proud and other people being like, wow. We gotta step our game up some here.
Well, I just want to give one anecdotal thing, much, much like when younger kids come to like a big game in the gym or whatever. I remember when my daughter was younger and she would get to do something at the high school or we would come to see the high school performances. Um, and it just builds such a, a future look for the younger kids to be dreaming about the day when they get to go to the high school. And it just gives them buy-in and investment for, you know, being in our district and being a Blue Devil and, you know, staying and all of that. So I just think that it also adds to that.
And to piggyback on what pretty much everyone has been saying here, this is already here. This big, beautiful auditorium that's just, uh, as Bill was saying is, has, uh, was built at another, another era. And not to, uh, carry it forward, the, the program's already there. We've already, our music, uh, musical productions, the, the plays, um, outside organizations. And at the least of which is that we here as a community in Huntington are probably the most preeminent, um, you know, arts community on the island. Uh, just to continue this and to have people come to our town, the people that are moving into our district, knowing that that's, that's who we are. And, uh, we're hand in glove with, with the community around us. It's, uh, would behoove us to, you know, continue to invest in what we have here. It's magnificent facility that we just, we need to keep going.
Anything else? Okay. I just want to make sure everybody got their moment. I told you I watched last year's board meeting. So, uh, this next slide here just shows the amount that is available in our capital reserves. So I'm going to, instead of sliding back, I'm just gonna trickle back here so I can make sure we're all on the same page. So of the, uh, little bit over five million, four point five, six million would be used as currently presented today, um, out of the capital reserve to support these projects. This number will be firmed up, uh, for you by the next board meeting as we look into those other areas that I mentioned tonight. Oh, also any funds that would be possibly, uh, available per the audit that will happen in really like July and August of twenty twenty-four that is not reflected here. So this is just what is upcoming. Uh, so we get to check off the March eleventh for employee benefits. The upcoming meeting will be curriculum and instruction and staffing, and really all of the rest of the nuts and bolts of the budget. And then, uh, the following meeting, which is April eighth, will be to really focus in on revenues. The hope is that the budget is complete and out by then, uh, in the area of revenue. So we know all of those factors. And then April fifteenth will be the budget adoption. May thirteenth is the public hearing and then May twenty-first is the budget vote. And that is it. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Dr. Harris. Okay. Moving on to Ms. McCoy.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approves CSC CPSC submissions as delineated.
Do they have a motion? Teresa, second, Kelly, all in favor? That is everyone.
Okay. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve personnel items on schedules five, seven, eight, eleven, thirteen, sixteen, seventeen, and twenty-two.
Can I have a motion? Christine, a second, Teresa, all in favor? Mr. Henderson? No, no announcements. Thank you so much. Dr. Harris.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve business items I through M.
Can I have a motion? Christine, second, Teresa, all in favor? That is everyone. Thank you. So we have some donations.
I'm going to take Michelle's job tonight. It's been a long time since I've done this one.
Multitasking.
We have two donations to, um, thank, be thankful for tonight. It is, uh, the first is from Ms. Terry Black presenting a donation of a Manolte XTS one camera accessory lenses and batteries to the Huntington School District Art Department. This donation has an approximate value of eight hundred dollars. And our second is, um, the Jack Abrams STEM Magnet School PTA is presenting a donation of planters and benches to the school. The, this donation has an approximate value of one thousand dollars. So thank you for those donations.
Okay. Moving on to our second public commentary, same rules apply, three minutes. Resident or staff going once, going twice. Okay. Um, any final comments from, uh, the board?
I just realized that I, uh, did not thank the music teachers for their amazing work that they did at Skimia and the student volunteers. Um, I know Mr. Demiglio was there and Dr. Geketti with the Tri-M kids. And they stayed all day and they worked their tails off. So thank you to them as well.
Thank you.
I'd also like to, uh, just, uh, make a comment at the High School Lacrosse, um, Parents and Booster Club, uh, had a fundraiser, uh, in the village this past week. Uh, um, a lot of money was raised to help, uh, Nellie, the team, but those, uh, other students that, uh, might be in need. Uh, but I just, uh, wanted to say the amount of people that were showing up. Um, and, and here, uh, very big crowd and also hearing about Skimia and all these other people. There's the community members from all different walks of life that are just continuing to come and be part of our district. Just, uh, shows the vibrancy that we have here. And I just really wanted to thank all the parents and even the, uh, Booster Club van, which is selling merchandise outside, uh, right now, uh, one of our schools. Uh, we're just very thankful for all the volunteers and the parents that are out there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can I have a motion to adjourn? Bill, second, Teresa, all in favor? Thank you.